Karen, would you like to lead us in the pledge? We got five thirty, let's stand for the pledge, everyone.
Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, the great deal of its own.
Thanks, Karen. Roll top.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Here.
Charles Walty.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections, my first.
Give a hard copy.
There's one back there.
I'm sorry, Judge Beebe called this morning, she is sick, and asked you postpone to next week.
Okay.
And on the five H, the overtime report is not complete, so there won't be.
So we are removing four A and five H. Anything else?
I'm good.
Item three, Commissioner Simmons, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just a second, I haven't had a chance to look at this, looked at a lot of things today, but I haven't looked at this.
We removed four A and five H.
Sorry, say that one more time, please.
We removed four A and five H. Item three, we got public comment, this is public comment on agenda items only. The rules for public comments, state your name for the record, speak only to the chairperson, stand behind the podium when speaking, limit comments to three minutes or fewer, and follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. I will remind everyone, this is questions, this is statements, this is not questions and answers, so you will not get any feedback from any of us commissioners with any type of public comment. So, public comment and then on agenda items only, come on up. Come on up.
Right here, sir. There.
Yeah, we're gonna have you sit right here.
Okay, I'm George Bueller, live at Lake Ogama.
Can you spell your last name?
B U H L E R, like Ferris. So I just wanted to comment, short-term rentals, we've been in a little bit of a heated issue over at Lake Ogama on that particular front. Ryan Veeder has been excellent, your county has been excellent. I'd just like to encourage Aldridge versus Sugar Springs, a finding earlier this year, a Pellicate Law, found that all short-term rentals are commercial businesses. We have commercial businesses between thirteen and fifteen currently running, and residential zone properties, waterfront residential. So I just want to encourage the county to do anything they can to enforce their law to stop commercial businesses from running in residential zones. And we actually have, I did a little study, and we actually have more beds available on any given weekend than the Super Eight Hotel over here, by seventy-five, available to rent. So just wanted to say thank you, make you aware of that, and make you aware of that law that Ryan is very well aware of, that they are, they have been found to be commercial businesses.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Steve Yuchaz, Y U C H A S Z. I also live on Lake Ogama, and I'm here to reinforce what Mr. Bueller just said. To expand on it a little bit, we had a last spring, the majority of the property owners voted to address the short-term rentals. To put it bluntly, we don't need these glorified frat houses, these commercial enterprises operating within a residential area. I've saved for fifty years to build my dream house, two months after I got my keys, I was dealing with short-term rentals coming straight for me. And it's a, it's a small problem now, but it's growing, and it will only get worse exponentially if we don't address this now. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? appointments, four B, Ryan Veeder, planning and zoning administrator, short-term rental update. Mr. Veeder? Good evening.
Evening.
Real quickly, I'm just gonna give you a quick, quick little history of where short-term rentals are, have been. Pretty much came to the Planning Commission back in twenty nineteen for the first time. The, the House, the Michigan House and Senate since twenty nineteen has, has come up with numerous, numerous bills addressing short-term rentals. And since that time, they've literally gone nowhere. So there, we started back in twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen was actually to amend the Michigan zoning enabling act, which is what gives us the authority to do zoning here at the county. Some of these other bills have now have gone even farther than that. But since twenty nineteen, there have been numerous ones that have addressed it, however, they've gone nowhere and have never been enacted. And that's pretty much been every year since twenty nineteen. Currently, we have a new bill that was put in front of the House here in twenty twenty-four. And that's House Bill number fifty-four thirty-eight. That bill is, the purpose of that bill is to provide for the registry promotion regulation of certain short-term rentals and hosting platforms to create certain databases, to provide for the imposition and collection of a statewide excise tax, to provide for the dispersment of the excise tax, to provide for the powers and duties of certain state and local government governmental officers and entities, and to prescribe penalties and remedies. So, this particular bill is in front of the House right now, I believe it has been forwarded on to the, the Committee for Local Government Municipal Funds. So here we have another bill that looks at doing some sort of regulations as a whole in the state of Michigan for short-term rentals. So this has been kind of a hotly contested issue for, for a lot of years. Back in twenty nineteen, at the Planning Commission with that bill, that was at that particular time, and Craig, you may remember, the way that it was worded, and since this was going to amend the Michigan zoning enabling act, and what we do as far as zoning here in Ogama County, we kind of took a wait-and-see approach on it. So all these years, all these different bills come in, there are different rules, regulations, things of that nature. So we're kind of stuck with what the legislature is doing. So, part of our issue with the Planning Commission is, we can go and enact something, we can create something, we can handle this, but if the state is going to take that away from us, then what's the purposes, what, we're spending money for something that's going to be taken away from us. So this happens in a lot of things currently with the new solar and wind legislation, I don't know, you guys have heard a lot about that. That's gonna be taken, could possibly be taken away from us at the state level. Lot of decisions in the telemarketing. More recently, the control of like mining, that is now under the guise of the state as well too, so. What we currently have in the zoning ordinance as far as short-term rentals go, so we have every district in Ogama County. Waterfront District is where we're seeing the majority of these short-term rentals. Obviously, they want to be on the water, they, they want to be able to play. So, so in those districts, we have permitted uses and we have special uses. Permitted uses are uses you don't need approval from the Planning Commission to do. Things like single-family dwellings, in the waterfront district accessory buildings, home occupations, and in family daycare. But we do also have a list of special approval uses. So within that list, the only use that we have on that list that even remotely applies to short-term vacation rentals are bed and breakfast establishments. By definition, the bed and breakfast establishment in our ordinances is a house or portion thereof where short-term lodging rooms and meals are provided as a commercial operation. I did speak, and it's probably been years since I spoke to our attorneys about it. The big caveat in there is the word "and", so they have to provide lodging rooms and meals for it to be considered a bed and breakfast establishment. I'm not aware of any of these short-term rentals that are actually providing the meal portion of that. So now it falls into a category which we do not have a defined use within the ordinance for it. Therefore, we are not, we are not regulating it. I will go back and talk a little bit about what George was talking about, he referred to a court ruling which stated that short-term rentals or vacation rentals are considered a commercial use of property. So this is a court case that had to deal with the property owners' associations' rights versus short-term rentals. This is not a zoning, was not a zoning decision, it was not anything brought up in that. And basically, the, the courts have assured, there were two cases here in twenty twenty-three, and they have basically have come out and said, homeowners' associations, property owners' associations that have deed restrictions or covenants that do not allow commercial uses within their jurisdictions, can actually prevent these commercial uses from happening.
So can each township do that? Isn't that how it is right now?
So there are a couple other ways that it could be handled, each individual township could come up with an ordinance. They could make short-term vacation rentals within their municipality register with them. They could charge them a yearly fee, they could make them go through an inspection, they could also put in some rules and regulations. One, in particular, one I saw was basically three strikes, you're out. So if they get three complaints, verified complaint against a short-term rental, they literally can revoke their, the permit that they receive from the township to operate that short-term rental. Homeowners' associations have the ability to regulate these, and I am finding more and more every day, homeowners' associations that have this language within their deed restrictions and their covenants, yet they're not willing to enforce it.
I, I guess I'm confused, because we've talked about this in our zoning since I came on board, and there's lots of private and public lakes in this county. I was understanding, under the understanding that there was very few in this county that could actually do short-term rentals because we considered it commercial. How I'm just understanding what you're saying is that pretty much anybody can, as long as it's not bed and breakfast, which they're not.
So the way that our zoning rules are set up, yes, as a bed and breakfast, but without the lodgings and the rooms, it wouldn't fall into that category. And the discussion previously at the Planning Commission was, well, let's wait and see what the state makes us do. No reason for us to change our ordinance for them to come back six months later and say, you can no longer do that. For instance, that first back in twenty nineteen was, they were going to make short-term vacation rentals a permitted use in all residential districts within your zoning, within your zoning jurisdiction, and they would not be considered commercial. Well, that has fallen off the wayside. This new bill is actually, doesn't really have anything to do with the zoning side of it, but they are putting some rules and some regulations. An individual would have to go through LARA, Licensing and Regulatory Flares of the State of Michigan.
Right.
And this particular bill tie bars with about nine other bills. And those other bills are, some of them are like the collection of the statewide excise tax, and then another bill is what they can and cannot do with that money they collect for it. One of those bills is actually to provide for powers and duties of certain state and local government officers and entities, and what they can do, that's in fact, these short-term rentals are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, so. So we're kind of in this pattern again, well, where the state is looking to take over control of the jurisdiction on this, but we are also kind of at their mercy until they decide, we don't know if this will pass or how long it will pass.
So when you get a complaint right now, like a, a rental next door, what are, what are you doing about it?
Really not a whole lot I can do, nine times out of ten, I hear the complaint after, after the people have been there. The majority of those complaints would be noise complaints. Now, these are, these are homes that were initially permitted as single-family dwellings, so. So whether or not they came to us, didn't ask for, probably didn't ask for permission. So now it's been turned into a vacation, so generally I hear that after the fact. And Lake Ogama is having issues with that as well too, because Lake Ogama is a private lake, so. There are things that they are doing on their end to protect the lake as well. But there are provisions within their ordinances and their covenants that give them the opportunity and the legal right to stop these from happening. And the big difference between like a homeowners' association or property owners' associations, their restrictions and their covenants, they can flat-out deny a use completely. They can say no commercial uses in this geographic area that we cover. From a zoning standpoint, we don't have the ability to do that. The zoning enabling act says we have to provide a spot or an area or district in the county or within our jurisdiction that covers every single type of use. And occasionally, we'll run across a use that we do not have in the zoning ordinance. We actually had a dispute, I think, Craig, you might have still been on there at that time. We have junkyards, so we have some, we have some stuff for junkyards. Well, we had an individual that was gonna do a recycling center or a recycling yard, which had to do with automotive parts. So the difference was in the language and the definitions, recycling center didn't cover the recycling of auto parts, but he wasn't exactly a junkyard as well either. So, when those things happen, then we need to make, we need to make a spot for them, or we just don't, we just don't regulate them at all, so.
So I guess to recap, am I understanding correctly, the association at Lake Ogama has a better opportunity of handling this versus the county?
Correct. A lot of these, I was just, in an unrelated manner, I was asked about a question via email today, and as part of that question, this particular property was in Stewart's Rifle River Resort. And part of that email that they sent me and documentation they sent me was actually the covenants and bylaws and deed restrictions for that actual area. And a lot of times, when it comes to these, these covenants and things of that nature, they're more restrictive than what our zoning ordinance is. I was surprised to see when this particular ordinance or this particular deed restrictions, they were filed and voted on and filed in the register of deeds in nineteen seventy-one. We didn't have zoning in Ogama County until nineteen seventy-one. And the current, the, the only current version that I can actually look at and see that was legally done is not until nineteen seventy-eight. So a lot of these deed restrictions actually come before we even had zoning here. And in their particular deed restrictions, it does say no commercial use of property in there. This particular one said no campers, no tents, no things of that nature. This, this particular subdivision was in the R-one zoning district, and in the R-one zoning district, the front setback, if you're not on the water, is twenty-five feet. Their deed restrictions actually say they do not allow any front setback less, anything less than forty feet. So there are a lot of these restrictions are out there, they're just not being enforced in the area where they should be enforced, and frankly, with that, the Michigan Supreme Court ruling that George was referring to, that was a property owners' association just here in Gladwin. And they upheld it. There was another, another court case from twenty twenty-three, and they upheld it, they upheld them as well too. And, and some of the opinions that I've been reading, it's, you're a homeowners' association, you do have every right to restrict those if they're in your restrictions or in your covenants, so. So the ability is there, but looks like there's enough legal.
Yeah, I was waiting for him.
Allow for it, so.
Well, he doesn't take a breath.
Go ahead, commissioners, do you have comments or questions, Brian?
Yeah, townships, the, the homeowners groups, yeah, as long as they're not lenient to, to our, our ruler, to state law, and they can put on more restriction.
Sure.
That, that Gladwin County one is probably Sugar Springs. Yeah, and they're tough, and they always have, you know, they didn't allow, they didn't allow campers for years to be on a lot unless you were building. Now, I guess they've opened that up a little bit more, but they had color codes to the houses and everything, you couldn't go in there and build a, a white house.
That, and, and some are.
And they were tough.
Is that, some are.
They were tough, so.
Some will not allow mobile homes, or these particular square footage.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Certain number of structures that are allowed, and, and sometimes they are actually more restrictive than what I allow in the ordinance, so. When those things in place, th- those are things that should, in, in my opinion, are, that's what the homeowners' association is for.
Absolutely.
So when you move to this area, that's what they're presenting to everybody. Now, Sugar Springs, that association has done a lot of hard work, and I'm sure they had to take their ruling to the Michigan Court of Appeals to get it to go their way, so. They have put out a huge expense pretty much to prove the fact that, yes, we can, we can limit what we, what you can and cannot do within our property owners' association.
Commissioner Woldy, do you have any questions?
I just got one, thanks, Ryan. I've worked with Ryan for a number of matters from some of our residents here this last year and a half. I think we're very fortunate to have Ryan here, and he's an asset to the county. I do understand the concerns of some of the residents that are here tonight. Now, you re, you regarded a couple times, you said, you really don't feel it's worth the time and energy because of possibility of the state coming back over, is that in regards to the, the House bill that you have right in front of you?
Well, part of that is, yeah, here, so, the, the portion that really interests me is the to provide the powers and duties of certain state and local government officers and entities, and they talk about in the bill what that, what that details, so I'm assuming it will be some sort of, so for instance, let's say, the, the township supervisor in Churchill Township is made aware of some individuals that are not following the laws that were put in state by the state of Michigan, what they can and cannot do. So what's the process for them to take care of that issue? Do they report it to the state, is it something that they do, they have the authority to take care of locally? Some of those things are pretty.
Where do people find these laws? If they do feel like they're seeing something or unsure of what the rules and regulations are at the state level?
So at the state level, these House bills, they, they pop up all the time, it's usually the first part of the year, usually within the first four months of the year is when you see a lot of these pop up. This particular one is from February thirteenth of twenty twenty-four. The majority ones I've looked at have been from January through April, April, but that doesn't mean that's the only time they'll pop up, so.
Commissioner Simmons.
So the bottom line is, it seems like the homeowners' association has to take these people to court to get a judgment against them, so they can't do that.
Well, it'll be up to the homeowners' association.
Right.
So they.
If they want to stop it, they have to do it.
They'll currently, right now. Now, I do think it is an issue that the Planning Commission should look at. However, we want to stay within the framework of anything that's currently being proposed at the state level, so.
But.
We, we can go and make changes right now, and those changes can be null and void in six months.
My question is this, then, can the state just go ahead and overrule what the homeowners' association says in a certain area when those rules were in place when they bought the house?
No, because we fall under different authority, so. From a zoning standpoint, our authority comes from the Michigan Enabling Act of two thousand and six.
Okay.
I believe it's the Subdivision Control Act, and if I'm not mistaken, it's like nineteen twenty-eight. That's where the authority for a property owners' association or a homeowners' association came in, where they can actually set certain rules and requirements for their association or the property that's within their association, so.
Because when, when the gentleman was up here speaking, you know, I'm thinking, if they have a homeowners' association, then that homeowners' association needs to act on that entity that's being violated with their homeless owners' association rules.
And there's some legalities there as well too, I mean, some of these covenants and deed restrictions are from the sixties and seventies, and they may even be prior to that, so. I'm not sure where their legal right falls in if the homeowners' association is, I, I don't know what they have to do be able to have that ability to keep doing that. I don't know if they have to register yearly, but there are some legalities within their organization that are separate than what we would deal with on our end as far as passing rules and regulations, so. But the ability is out there for them to do that right now. I am assuming at some point in time, the Planning Commission will get involved and look at this, but it'd be like us passing a new solar ordinance right now.
Yeah.
Well, to me.
Be smart to do.
To me, it should be pretty simple, each lake is different, they should have their own association, make their own rules, if something, if someone's making money off something as primarily as a rental, that to me is commercial, they're making money off of it.
Which, which I totally understand, one of the cases I read today is a city here in Michigan, they have eighteen hundred residents, permanent residents there, in the summer months, they'll have twenty thousand people living there. With all the vacation rentals camping and everything else that's going on, so it does put a huge stress on, you know, their, their facilities or infrastructure, so.
Do you have anything to add? Questions? Thanks, Ryan, more to come.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Item four C, Sheriff, related to a secondary road patrol grant and M. Cole's training grant. Come on up. Good evening, guys.
I'll just, just to inform you that we were successful in getting that grant that we applied for secondary road and also then M. Cole's training grant, so that should be, that should be.
That's what you had to have access for the other day?
Yes, so, the secondary road patrol, we submitted the application for the state allocation for upcoming fiscal year. It's not been awarded at this time, but we met the deadline for submission. That's an increase from sixty-four thousand and some change to ninety-one thousand five hundred and nine, that's the state allocation for this coming fiscal year. So once that's accepted, you'll be notified and we'll move forward with that. The M. Coles, we did receipt that in, just notifying you that we received forty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents from M. Coles, and that is for to cover the cost of the training wages associated with the two recruits that are currently in our training academies.
Did you get anything from Michigan Works?
Michigan Works did not, they're still in communication with me, but with M. Coles coming through with this level of funding, Michigan Works really didn't have to cover any of the costs of the actual training and wages. So, they kind of unhold now until the other side of this training program, so.
Secondary road patrol grants, got it for one, one year, correct?
Correct, that's one fiscal year, that's the state, the county does a match to it, and we do put on the program.
Questions, comments, commissioners?
No, this is, this is a good deal, we knew that we were gonna get more from the state on this, and it's, it's good to see.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, this is really good news, not only the, the M. Coles, because we were the last couple months questioning whether or not we're for sure gonna get it. But, but the big surprise, I think, is that secondary road, ninety-one thousand, that, that covers our man for sure, and, and a vehicle.
I don't ever believe it being that high.
Yeah.
That's a good news. It really stabilized it, since they've moved it from the, the revenue line item of traffic tickets and whatnot to the liquor control, they did that a couple years ago.
Oh, is that right?
That's why we're seeing this increase, they're, they're stabilized, and now they're seeing, this is what we're bringing in, the current way that they do it. There's an increase across the state.
I was, that's what I was gonna ask, is this across the board?
Yeah, this is, they split up. Go back, it was over five million dollars, it was split up between all the secondary road programs, so.
Retail selling of places of spirits. All, all my runners, buy more.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ray.
No, let's get notes.
Commissioner Simmons.
I really appreciate you putting this much effort in, despite of what we have done in the past, it has hindered you in some respects. And I do apologize for that, and I'm very glad that you made this happen. And I look forward for you new troops to come on for road patrol.
Right, yeah, we are too. Right, yeah, we are too.
Great. Good job, Sheriff.
We have been notified that M Coles is going to continue the program next fiscal year, but we won't have any real numbers to it until after the October one, when they get their new budget. And so it'll be November, December, before we see how much they make available for the next round.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
I know.
Item five, discussion items, please, Tom, you know?
Commissioner Scott asked if this be put on, just to get an update on where it is. We have not met uh, for some time. Really no update.
No, the last we had had, you and I had met, and Commissioner Simmons missed the meeting, and there were some questions that we had, and I, we haven't reconnected, so we will definitely put that on the agenda.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, because I was just looking at it, believe it or not, today, and I thought we got to get back to this.
Yeah.
We're running short of time. So we will definitely readdress that. So keep that on there, if you don't mind. So that's not dropped. Uh, seasonal snow removal, RFP.
So the RFP was issued. Bits were due by eleven o'clock today. We have one. Uh, it's from Finished Concrete, who's been doing our snow removal for the last two or three years now. Uh, we've been quite pleased with them. According to the policy, we'll open this up. I'll let you know what the numbers say. That's. We ask for them to be sealed, and this one is really sealed. Glancing at the pricing that they've uh, put forward, uh, we have uh, eight locations that we asked to be bid on. They bid on seven of those locations. They were unable to do location eight, which is transit uh, because it's uh, out of their kind of the, under their service area. Uh, we do have uh, another option out at Transit, uh, working with Ray, so I'll get with him, and we'll we'll take care of that separately. The prices that they've quoted for this coming year are exactly the same as they were last year. Uh, of course, this is all dependent on the amount of snow we get. Saw an article yesterday that said we're going to get a lot this year, so we'll see. But bottom line, um, uh, no change in their pricing. Uh, they do have a couple of uh, notes on here that I'll go over, uh, just about, uh, they they will shovel around this building, and they will call the shovel deep snow during storms, you know, and they have a special pricing for that, which is consistent with what they did last year as well. So uh, no surprise there, which is a good thing, and with your approval, we'll put it on for next week to to accept the contract.
Everybody's been happy, you said, correct, with their services?
I certainly have been, um, and I've not heard any complaints. In fact, when we have had issues, it's usually about a pile of snow that's been left, and they're, and usually the process is getting to it, so uh, pretty, pretty responsive group.
Questions, comments, commissioners, Commissioner Scott?
No, uh, we need to put this, get this approved, so so that they can put their solid order in for the winter.
Just in case it snows next week?
No, no, I mean, this is why, this is why we bid it in the summer, in the, in the summer months, so that they can get in us assault bid, because a lot of them have to order salt months ahead of time.
I agree.
So.
Commissioner, um, Wiltsey.
No, I'm good. They do good work, and price has increased, so it's good news.
Go ahead. Thank you. Last thing, Commissioner Rayo. Okay, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget review.
It is obviously an agenda item through the month of September. I did hand out a narrative tonight that gets into the detail of the operation at the jail, the costs, some of the trends, and some of the impacts on the general fund. In the interest of transparency, I will ask Tom to put this on the webpage so that the public can access it as well. I tried to be as brief as possible. In this case, brief meant fourteen pages, but there's a lot of data and tables in there that I think will be helpful in terms of the the overall general fund and and its impact. Um, the um, budget itself still stands as it's been recommended. Uh, as commissioners know, Roscommon County did uh, tell us yesterday late in the afternoon that they are no longer interested in housing our inmates, which means that we find another location, and we've got three weeks to do it. Uh, I had to have contact with two other counties that we will reconnect with and see what we can work out. I will work closely with the law enforcement committee on that process. Uh, so there could still be changes in that area, but again, we've got three weeks to get this resolved. I'm fairly confident we'll be able to do that.
What were we talking about?
Hold on, Commissioner Simmons, were you, were you finished?
Uh, pretty much. I just want to, you know, continue on the agenda, uh, to have this on the agenda, so if there are any other issues that that you have, I mean, obviously see each other once a week, but it's uh, uh, you maybe have gone over something, have questions, would like to add things, take things out, whatever that might be.
Commissioner Simmons.
What, are these the two entities right here you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, I thought they were, okay.
Do we, were you done, were you done?
Yep, that's all I wanted to know.
We did get that email late yesterday afternoon related to Roscommon County, and it looked like you were going to touch base with with them.
And did had a brief conversation with their administrator uh, this afternoon, and um, uh, you know, I've heard some things that I I can't verify just in terms of who's got those beds over there now, but they uh, just just have decided that they are no longer interested in working with Ogama. Uh, and don't have time to dwell on that. We got to move forward, so.
Oh, you guys just got out of a law enforcement committee meeting, correct? Is there anything that's happened during that meeting that would be beneficial to this topic?
I think he discovered it pretty well there. Um, you know, we don't have a definite yet, but uh, it's going to take some investigation. Um, I don't think that can pass and go into months at a time or anything like that, but uh, just got to dot some i's, cross some t's.
Any other questions, Commissioner? How, do you have anything?
I'm not really on that.
I guess what this, again, this wasn't here last night. I haven't had an opportunity to look at this. I I guess, why, why was this, it looks very uh, informative? Why was this produced?
Just to summarize or put in one place, uh, everything that we've talked about here since about last October. So you'll see a lot of things in there that are very familiar to you. Uh, reiterating where the revenues and expenses are with the jail, uh, looking at uh, uh, jail population figures updated through the end of August. A couple of new things that are in there. There's discussion about the overall fund balance for the county stands, and you know, some tables in the back that show you exactly where we uh, line up with other counties. There's also, if you're looking at those audits, a poll where other counties are allocating out of their general funds, uh, as compared to Ogama, so you'll have to look at. And that occasionally uh, discussed the jail bond, and while that's not directly related to the jail activity, the operation, uh, you have in there that schedule of uh, payments through twenty thirty-eight, I believe it is.
Right.
Now roughly three hundred and seventy thousand a year, just in the round numbers, uh, that that were committed through there. Uh, and then, of course, everything is source cited, so the last thing you'll put pages get into what statutes, what contracts, everything else that we've discussed. So um, that it will be a dynamic document. As I find out the things that we've talked about, I may drop in another paragraph or two just to make it as complete as possible. Uh, but it's all in one place now. You can go to it, look at it, uh. Questions about what our inmate populations have been, you've got some background now to do that. And of course, if there's anything else that you'd like to see in there, let me know, and I'd be happy to include it.
I guess, again, we're we're three weeks out, and some uh, information was given to us yesterday. Uh, is, do you feel a sense of urgency here?
I've felt urgent since October on this. Um, we do have, uh, you know, a couple of outlets that uh, are are promising at this point, so it it's going to take a little bit more work, but roll up my sleeves, we'll get to it, we'll get an answer. Uh, there are the counties even besides these two that uh, have space available, so it's just a matter now of uh, you know, beating bushes and figuring out who's got the best option for us to consider.
I'd like to make comment.
Go ahead.
Um, so obviously, last year when we sat here, you know, almost a year ago now, we knew we had to make some really hard decisions, and those were extremely tough decisions, but we needed to do them to move forward to create financial stability for this county. Then we formulated a a budget committee, which we were very consistent with, and we we met, we had stakeholders involved. We tried to come up with plans, so we had didn't come down to this last three weeks. You know, we we spent, we started, I believe that was in January, Commissioner Simmons, you were chair of it. We're consistent with all meeting, with with meeting, you know, monthly. Sometimes we had more meetings than that. And we continued over the course of January through the whole entire year with not being able to find any big improvements, yet we knew what we were going to be faced with. Seven hundred plus thousand dollar deficit. We know that we absolutely one hundred percent cannot touch any remaining ARPA funds. We cannot touch tax revolving funds. It is not sustainable. We spent millions and millions of dollars of non-sustainable money to keep operating a county at a level that we can. This is hard decisions. This is the hardest decisions of my life, and I've had to make a lot of hard ones. But we have nowhere else to go. This is, this is hard, hard stuff. You know that email yesterday from Roscommon? That was, that was a gut kicker. We're in, we're in the process of negotiations. That's what negotiations are. You see things you want to change. You let people read things. They 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 give suggestions. You change. Absolutely no negotiations, no nothing. We're out of the picture. This is tough times for Ogama County, but we absolutely one hundred percent cannot go back and touch ARPA funds that we need to use for for structural integrity of this county to be able to run our county government for another year at a level that we cannot afford. We cannot do that. I will not be a part of that.
Any other comments?
I wouldn't be a part of it either, and I agree with this, Commissioner Wiltsey, hundred percent. Uh, because it's not sustainable. You get us through another year, and and then we'd be right back where we are right now. Nowhere. Uh, and I look at this, see what I found balances, if you look at this for eighty-three out of eighty-three, and the, you know, we're at less one percent fund balance, and one above us is nine percent fund balance. And some of them are at a hundred and forty-something percent fund balance that they have in their clompers. So we are in a bad situation. In fact, as as I look, as I look at this way it is right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I've looked at these numbers, and looked at these numbers, and looked at these numbers to say how we can save this county. And the only thing I come up with is, because close to this jail's not going to save the county. It will help, but it's not going to save this county. We need the head lead to pass to save this county, and it didn't pass, significantly didn't pass. And there are other things that that the state has taken away from us. Uh, and I agree, I agree with the with the policy they did, that veterans who are hundred percent disabled, they don't have to pay any property taxes, and I agree with that. But if the state is going to do that, they don't have any skin in the game. The skin comes out of our pockets. So if they're going to make legislation like that, then they need to reimburse us for what they take away from us, and they're not doing that. They're not doing that with Headley. They're not doing that with anything they pass. And who's the one that suffers? We are. And I know the audience always says, you need to live within your means. We have tried to do that. We have tried to complete Mission Impossible. And that's where we are right now. Mission Impossible. And I don't know if this county can be saved. Be honest with you. And I look at these figures of where we are as far as what we have for fund balancing in a, in a, in a general fund, and there's nothing there. And I will be upfront with you, I I don't think we have anywhere to go. And I think and this is thinking, you know, I'm not the be all, know all person. But when I look at a situation like this, I'm look, I I I, in my mind, we're bankrupt. That's where we are. We're bankrupt. And you may disagree with me, but we don't have the money. It's just not there. And a lot of it is not our fault, because monies have been taken away from us. And monies have not been replenished, because the the people chose that, and they're, they're, they're having a hard time, too, with the economy the way it is today right now. They're having a very difficult time making ends meet, and I can understand the way they voted. I'm looking at um, and I hate to say it, and I hate to see it happen. But I I, in my vision, I see an emergency manager coming in because there isn't anything here. There's anything left. We have no money. Our operating general fund is two point four million dollars in the hole. That's where that is right now. If anybody has any wonderful ideas, I know people like to to complain, and and I like to complain, too, about our situation and how we got here. But the state has not helped us any either. So if anybody has any great ideas, but I don't know where else to go. I really don't know where else to go. There just isn't any money.
Commissioner Scott, any comments?
No, we just got to run this course right now. We got to, we got to figure out how to make this budget come together, so. By next week, we'll have some more to report, but.
Commissioner Rayo.
Well, I guess we'll see next week.
Item five D, Heartland MMPC meeting sounder.
This is the Material Management Planning Committee, uh, that we're a part of, with seven other counties. They've released the meeting schedule for the duration of the uh, grants through the state to create these uh, material management plans, cycle plans. We will host three of those meetings over the next two years. If it goes longer, we're the first ones out of the gate for, you know, uh, another meeting. Uh, but they'll be over at the annex. They do need to meet in each of these counties, and I do believe that they will team to townships as well as they get into the planning process to, and just again, make sure everybody is kept up to date. Uh, Commissioner Scott is our representative on this committee, and I will be attending as well, uh, as the I don't know, the staff contact for for the uh, for the Eagle uh, group, and uh, we are off and running. Uh, I don't, off the top of my head, know when this next meeting is, but, you know, I've got them all on my calendar.
Yeah.
It's nice that it's rotating.
Yeah. And they're on Zoom as well, so we don't necessarily have to travel, say, to Reef City, uh, to hit one of these meetings.
Oh, okay. Anything to add to that, Commissioner Scott?
No, no, uh, there are all over the place. And all, and of course, we're about the farthest east, so. No, that'll be good. We'll see how it goes.
County billing accessibility project.
Brian Steins here.
Mr. Stein.
Commissioner Wiltsey had two of our buildings, and Brian has some ideas on the entrance and also the accessibility for the restrooms.
Good.
Hi, Brian.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fantastic. How are you?
Good.
Nice to see you.
You too. So to change, and I mean, for the entrances along into that back back, you know, the back building, the main entrance we're using. If you do just the push button stations, that'll hold the doors open so people can go in and out. You can do that with a light bulb permit to get that in.
Okay.
If you want to upgrade the very free bathrooms, I went through and measured some of the bathrooms. So the public bathrooms on the east side of the building, by the prosecutor's office and upstairs, you can remove a toilet from the women's and remove a rear end off from the men's and make some very free bathroom in each one of them, but you also got to redo the sink, because the sink sticks out so far. I don't know if you guys been in them. But the sink sticks out too far. You can't get the wheelchair by them. So so that would be a a simple thing to do there, but you would need drawings from an architect or engineer to draw that up to do it. But I measured, you won't need to cut floors or change drains, because the one, the toilet that's up against the wall is far enough to meet the ADA complacency as far as positioning of it.
Is the bathroom downstairs handicap accessible?
No.
They're built in nineteen seventy-four or five to the the accessible um, codes back then. That buil- building can run without change the way it is now, without any change, and still be up to code. But if you want to update it, that's what my recommendation would be, is to have the two bathrooms upstairs and two bathrooms downstairs, add ADA compliance bathroom to meet today's code for that, and I think it'd be done the most economical way. You still have the drawing, but they would have to put new dividers in and remove a toilet from each bathroom and a rear end from each bathroom.
Well, just putting those safety switches when you walk in, or those uh, buttons when you walk in, those doors, are they wide enough for a large wheelchair or a large walker?
They open up a clearance of thirty-four inches. Your metal detector is only thirty-two. And the code thirty-two is the entrance, what you need when the door is open at ninety degrees between the hinges and the the stop, doorstop inside that meets those requirements.
Commissioner Wiltsey, do you have anything to add to that?
If you want to change the doors, you can do that. But what's there would work.
I appreciate, um, you know, Brian getting this information together for us. You know, again, that's, you know, the remaining ARPA funds that we have, these are the type of things that need to get done. Like Brian said, I mean, we could, we'd have to pay for the drawings, but we can bend that out, and that's not substantially huge work. But the excuse me.
excuse me, but those are items that, uh, I'm out of water. Um, those are items we need to get done. But on, on top of that, thank you for doing that, Brian, um, also, I knew guys report that I had met with Buildings and Grounds, Chris, and with Craig Hui from Mechanical in regards to um, boilers running, while chillers are running, you know, there was, there was complaints of why are we doing this, why are it's costing a lot of money, and of course, you know, we've got to look at everything that we possibly have going on, utility costs have increased, you know, substantially. So I had a really good walkthrough with, with Craig and Chris. Um, Honeywell pretty much takes care of all the electrical part of, of the components, our stuff's old, our stuff's old, a lot of it's analog. But Honeywell would be the one that would come in that would need to do some of the things, like a possibility would be to close some of our dampers to get less air coming in and out, and it could save money not only in the summer, but yet also in the winter. Now, Chris has an idea that we can maybe hopefully use someone that we have the means, um, in-house to help him to be able to try to get these dampers closed, and then of course, we run that for two to three months, and we can do a cost analysis and see if it's saving us money. But if we can't get the person in-house who might be able to help him, then Honeywell, we could get them involved, but that's, he figures at least a couple thousand dollars for them just to show up. But Chris is going to talk with our in-house person that could possibly help him, and hopefully that will work. And we can do some tests to see if we can save some utility costs there. Uh, but he clearly stated to me that that's the way that that chiller boiler has run for years and years and years, he says there's nothing different going on, so.
So what's our next, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have one other suggestion, I would change all the lighting in that building, put LEDs in.
Yeah. We've talked about that.
Yeah, that would be a big savings to us.
Yeah, that's very hard to hear, I said that.
You don't hear these lights run at all.
So I guess are, are you guys in favor of, of, um, what's the next step here, putting out RFPs for bids for this?
Well, for the things that Brian just mentioned, the entrance and then those restrooms, absolutely, I mean, we, we've got an idea there, what we want to do. A few other things, I mean, if you want to put lights in there, we could certainly put a bid out for lighting too. Uh, but I appreciate what Brian Stein provided, now the detail that we would need to put in an RFP so that we get accurate bids in it that we can consider. And I'm confident just in what he's told us here today that we have that and can move forward if that's your desire.
I would start with the drawing.
Yeah.
I think this is extremely important, and we have ARPA funds to do this, and this is what it's for, yes, sir.
Um, do you foresee, uh, uh, main door entrances both changing to wider? In the future, do you see anything like that coming down the pipe?
You know, uh, the, the more you want to do to that building, the more you would have them, because they're going to have to use the rehabilitation code. If you want to do more, and there's phases to that, there's phase one, two, and three. That three is more extensive than what you'd have to do to comply to it. The one you'd want to be. But if you, they, they would have to go through and calculate the ultimate load of that whole building upstairs, downstairs, the courts is forty square foot per person. The main is building is a hundred square foot per person, they'd have to total that all out. It's a total number of what they're running in through one door.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just wondering. I would, uh, I brought this up a little bit ago, because I witnessed the a, a motorized wheelchair coming through, and he was very frustrated because he barely fit through the door. And barely fit through the, the metal detector also.
Right, and that's smaller than the door.
Well, I know, but it doesn't have a sill plate either, and running the wheels over the sill plate and everything else, I mean,
Right.
I get it, I mean, I don't want to ride the chair either. I would be, I would be, uh.
You got room to change the doors.
Yes, yes.
Then you'd have to do something different to get around the metal detector once it's, can't go through there.
Well, that, that's something that our security can handle, they have ones, everything else. I, I would be in favor of making the doors a little bit wider, uh, if they're thirty-four now, make them thirty-six.
They're thirty-six.
Oh, they are thirty-six.
Thirty-six inch door.
Right, alright, well.
And Judge Williams came to us a while ago too, for the handicap bathrooms, I think upstairs.
That's why I would address them, because I, I went and measured them just to see if, well, I thought you'd have to saw cut, you change drains and stuff, and you don't have to.
He had a complaint, so I think we, we think we need to move forward with, with pricing, drawings and.
No.
Thanks, man.
What's the west bathrooms, are all right?
No, I guess, I wouldn't do, I would not do the whole building then.
No, you're just looking in again.
The only thing down at the other side is their office and, um, but as long as you have them on the main floor, and you got them upstairs for the elevator for them.
Okay.
Right, so I agree with that.
Can we maybe speak up, I could not even.
Uh, yeah, medical examiner update.
I have nothing, uh, more than what we've already, uh, seen in those emails that went back and forth. I did speak with Brian Hart, uh, the CEO down at, uh, Institute for Science and Forensic Medicine. Uh, I'm very concerned if this medical examiner, uh, does resign on September thirtieth, that we have somebody immediately in place to take over on October one. If we do not, that's a problem, we have an obligation under state statute to have a medical examiner. And though we have our, uh, medical examiner investigators that they've hired, I understand there may be some turnover there as well. Uh, there were a couple of other points that were made in the email that I need to follow up on, they're very troubling. Uh, just, uh, what contradicted, uh, some of the things we were told here just a few weeks ago. So I'm, I'm going to want to follow up on that, I will keep you updated. Our county attorneys, uh, on this as well, uh, you've, uh, seen his response so far, so I will work in tandem with, uh, the county attorney to make sure that our interests are taken care of. Uh, you all probably also received an email from another provider. Uh, this was a provider that was, that did provide a, a, a response to the RFP we issued a year ago. Their pricing, although not the lowest, was reasonable, uh, considering, and, uh, that's certainly an option that we'll be open to, should we need to go another route. Uh, they have a very good reputation, particularly with the county's, uh, administrators that I know that they serve. And so I'm confident that we're not going to be left high and dry, but this is something we're going to have to stay on top of. It looks like we've got September, or they have September to work this out. Uh, so we may be here having another conversation the first part of October.
When does our contract expire with them?
We just completed our first year, we'll have two more years. Pretty sure it might be four more, I'm often, it's either three or five year.
There seems to be ongoing issues with this organization.
Couple of things, uh, you guys, when Brett was in the back there, she said in the back of the room, they can't hear. So I appreciate people being here, I mean, this, this is good, I'd like to see people here like this at every meeting. If we could just talk a little bit louder. Um, I've talked to Tim about this for a while, when this first got brought to us, when we, we interviewed the CEO there, and I asked him clearly some questions that we're seeing now, that, uh, there's a good chance that he was not truthful with, so, with that being said, I, I've asked him, you know, costs our county a lot of money to have this, so we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars, and talk about the worst service we possibly have to ask when one of our county residents pass away. I want to guarantee you that terrible time in somebody's life, family, that we got the best people we can for the amount of money we're paying that's going to take care of that situation. Hundred thousand dollars. We need to make sure that that service is consistent, and that we're getting the best service we possibly can, and I know you're staying on it. But it's extremely important, we make sure that something doesn't happen, and we get lost in the dark, and if we would have a county resident pass away, that would be absolutely horrible if that service wasn't there to be provided. So we've got to take this very seriously.
Commissioner Scott.
Um, first of all, about the speaking, the other room had microphones.
Correct.
So you picked up everything. What's our exit? What's our exit out of that contract?
There, there's two, uh, two different scenarios, the first scenario is, uh, uh, exit for, uh, non-performance of the agreement. Uh, depending on who you talk to, either immediate or thirty days. If we simply wanted to just cancel the contract, it's because we want to do that, that's a hundred eighty-day notice, so roughly sixty days.
Okay.
Without cause, I, I'm sorry.
I agree with you, we, this is constant problems, we're, and we've had, had them come here and promise us everything else, um. Yeah, well, stay on, I, one more glitch, I, I, I gotta say, that's lack of performance.
I, I agree, this is the second, we're just into our second contract with them, correct?
Yes.
Um, I had some conversation this week, uh, behind the scenes with some individuals that worked directly with them, um. And unfortunately, when we were asking individuals, when we were trying to make this decision whether or not to continue with them, we didn't hear a lot of the complaints, but we did seek um, any concerns, and this week, uh, talking to some, uh, businesses, uh, some individuals that do deal one-on-one with these, there was some significant concerns. Um, I, I, with all of these that have been brought about, I, I think we need to move forward with exiting as well.
I think it'd be a good idea if you'd call these, this list of, uh, at least half this list there, you know, which counties were you talking about? That you were aware of.
All the ones with the other organization, that would be, uh, Noma Costa is a big one.
It was north.
They were located, but yeah, a lot of them to the north.
Did you get that, also was Alpena, did you get that email, it was very, very professional, very nice, um, said they're very interested.
Francie, Oscola, Tony, uh, Crawford.
Ross Common.
At Zigo. I didn't see Ross Common.
I thought I did.
Okay, well, this list that I'm looking at here is close enough, and uh, I ca- I, I can say that I was, I had a resident pass away, and, and I was there when our medical examiner did show up, and showed up in a timely fashion, but the, I don't think that's, that's not the problem, is the medical examiners themselves, this is the administration of it. This is, this is the problem that we're running into. And the, and the glitches that are coming about it, so they, they leave us with a lot of doubt whether or not they're going to keep with their contract.
These are some big accusations. Um, I mean, this, this is pretty major.
Well, we, we're told like that Stockman, Stockwell, or whatever was out of the picture, now he's in, he's including it in every email, what's going on? You know, so are you lying to me then, or are you lying to me now?
Any other, Tim, did you have something?
No.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
No.
Commissioner Mayho.
We don't have to put up with it.
No, no, we don't, because these problems seem to be getting bigger. Uh, Budget Twenty Twenty Four Budget Report.
You've got the document on the iPads, I just did the update through August thirty-first. After September, of course, we'll do our fourth quarter adjustments, and hopefully, uh, hopefully we'll see, uh, some improvements over twenty-three.
Is there anything you, that really stands out that you would like to talk to us directly about?
Uh, just the usual, you go to the overtime on the jail, i- is, uh, up again, we talked about that a little bit at Law Enforcement Committee. Uh, the other overtimes for, uh, Road Patrol and for the Sheriff's Office three oh one are definitely manageable. Uh, they're not, uh, nothing standing out there. Now, even with the jail, even with the overtime being where it is, its bottom line looks pretty decent so far. Now, of course, that could change, you know, in a, uh, in any moment, but, uh, right now, at least the bottom line looks okay. The rest of the budget looks okay, but we've got, uh, the final push for all of our state, uh, agreements to come in September, in fact, we've got to report this due tomorrow, that's got to get down there to get, make sure our reimbursements come in. Uh, we won't know, uh, you know, the final numbers obviously on the property tax revenue until earlier in September. But that's just common, that's, that's the usual kind of thing that we're on top of, so right now, immediately no concerns, but obviously we need to remain vigilant and make sure that this thing is brought home.
And that we close where we should close.
Yeah.
Commissioners.
No, I've looked over some of this, most of these business lines are right on, right on for this time of year. And, uh, I didn't see anything really glaring.
This is ADQ pages?
Yeah, 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 kind of look at the totals, kind of, rather than just every, every, uh, uh, line. But, uh, yeah. Um, when do, uh, when do we, uh, did I ask the treasurer? When, when do we make the townships and all the entities whole?
Ends of merger, straight up.
Oh, just then, not, not twice after each election? Nope, okay, okay, all right, looking forward to it.
Commissioner Wiltzy?
No.
Commissioner Simmons? Mr. Mayho? I, okay, no, uh, Commissioner comments? Commissioners, Commissioners, uh, Wiltzy?
Uh, since we had a little break last week, I've been had a lot of meetings, um, usually middle of the third week, I've got a lot coming up. And we didn't just get out of a, a law enforcement meeting. Um, again, I think I pretty much covered some of the comments that I wanted, wanted to make there. Um, we had some good spirited talks. Um, it is good to see that we have two future soon-to-be hopeful deputies, you know, one in Delta Academy right now, one up in Grand, in Grand, uh, Traverse City. Um, you know, we, we understand the importance of having as much Road Patrol coverage as we can, we understand that we're shorthanded, and that, uh, sooner is possible, you know, we, we want to be able to have that, uh, Road Patrol back going full throttle, and we understand the importance of it, obviously that's why we push so hard to try to get some more people through the academy, and it was good that the sheriff and the undersheriff found two candidates they feel real comfortable with. But obviously, we all know that can't come soon enough, so. Other than that, I really don't, uh, I don't really have anything, anything else.
Commissioner Scott.
I'm glad to see everybody came tonight, uh, wish you would come more often. Um, I, I see a lot of township officials here. And I think I echo, I think they echo my same thing, that they'd like to see more participation in their meetings also. Uh, the, the screen up here is just full of names, and I got to say more and more names up there each meeting. Um, I can't tell you how many people I tell, you can zoom in, you don't have to come here. You can zoom in anywhere on YouTube. You can look at it, it will be on YouTube tomorrow. Movie stars, wow. Anyway, um, and you can watch the meeting, you can see the whole thing, you can see the whole, everything in the context that it was in, not, not sound bites. And, and, uh, and I'm surprised that more and more people are telling me they're watching YouTube, more and more. So, um, just, it's end, it's, it's, it's September, we got a budget to complete for the state. Um, been here eight, eight budgets so far. And we've been down the wire just about every time. Um, I'm glad to know we start out the process a lot sooner than we used to. It's tough, it is, this, uh, eighty-two pages, you said, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's the total budget for this, for the county, eighty-two pages. And that's what commissioners do, eighty-two pages. I think the clerk's got, uh, maybe a page or two, and the treasurer's got a page or two, and other departments got five or six pages, but the commissioners have eighty-two. That's what we take care of. So.
Commissioner David.
That's, that's my soapbox tonight.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Commissioner Wiltzy?
Well, as normal, there's a couple of things I want to add on. Um, EMS, we all know that, you know, sadly, our current director is, is leaving out there. Um, we did have the deadline was met for applications, we received nine, um, out-of-house applications, two in-house applications. I was on the committee to, um, select who we feel would be best interviewed. Um, from there, Chairman Paul, our undersheriff, and two other, um, board members will take on those interviews. We have two in-house applicants, and we have four out-of-house applicants for those. And we're hoping that those interviews will, will be completed before our next board meeting on Thursday, September ninth. So there will be more information to come on that, and then, uh, just one more item, our transit, you know, we have a new director out there that we're all are very excited about and what he's going to bring to the table, I know I've had a lot of, as being the transit chairman. I feel that's my responsibility also to make sure that, you know, he feels that he has that assistance and not being thrown into the lines then. Tim also talked to Tony a number of times, and I'm happy to report that Tony is very happy with the way things are going moving forward, he realizes there's a lot of things that, you know, that can be done to make us more efficient out there. He really appreciates the fact that Ray's involved to help him in this transition. And, uh, he really feels good about things out there, we do, we do all know the importance of our, of our transit, so. I just wanted to give a quick update on that, I, just a couple of things popped in my head.
Commissioner Rayho.
Do you have a plan if we're going to go no place to put the inmates?
Find a place to put them.
You can take them home with you.
Yeah.
But if we don't, what are we gonna do?
We're going to, I'm not willing to say that that won't be successful. We we will find a place. That we can we may find more than one, but that we can afford. Well, yeah. Yeah, that's the whole objective. We have to be able to afford it.
Commissioner Simmons?
Oh, do I have anything?
You have comments. We're under comments for commissioners and then we're going to public comments. So say what you have.
Yeah, I do have a comment and um. I go along with uh Commissioner Scott. I'm glad to see a lot of people are coming here and I'm glad to see a lot of people are zooming in. And my main reason for that is so you can come to these meetings and find out what actually is going on. Rather than listening to rumor control. So when you talk to your friends, you can say what's happening at these meetings. Whereas other people who never come and don't listen to Zoom, they listen to what out what's out there in the public and they believe it. So I am absolutely elated that there's this many people here tonight. I hope you come back next time and every other time after that and bring your friends with you. Um, because it is important that you know the facts. And don't listen to rumor control. Cause it. What's usually putting out is not what's being said out in the community. So I agree with you. I am I am absolutely elated that there's that many people here tonight.
I I think it's also helped with with having a reporter from the paper um again for a period of time, quite a period of time we did not have. So I think that has also helped with this and he's been very consistent at coming and and doing a very good job at uh putting facts. Um, out there, so. Now it is time for public comments. I'm gonna read.
Before you go to public comment, I have one more comment. I have one more else.
Oh, my gosh, guys.
I don't.
We're gonna be.
I don't.
So I'm absolutely excited about our airport runway being done. Should be open for business tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Started at the beginning of August. And the runway has been completely torn out and completely redone. It's already painted. It's we're ready for operations, I think, tomorrow. Need some grass seed though, so we can replace the grassy that's kind of torn up in the process. But yeah, it looks very nice and uh we on the airport board are very happy about that. Really looks great.
One more thing to touch on with there. Um, again, all we can go off is facts. We have to set this balance and we have to set it right. So we can create financial stability for this county. You guys have heard me say that since day one. Now, this is this is the stuff. These are facts. It's gonna be put on our website. We would appreciate people to educate themselves to learn the facts. They're gonna find out information. Things that have happened over the last few years where hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue we had are no longer there. These things all affect our general funding, where we're at today. We have to take the time to educate ourselves to come to these meetings, ask us these. These these questions and then we can get you the facts. Everybody goes off of social media and you hear this and you hear that and you hear this. Please tell people to come here, go to Zoom and and please read the summary that's gonna be put on our website. There's a lot of very good information regarding this jail. Extremely hard decisions for the five of us, extremely hard decisions.
I do appreciate this, but again, I haven't had an opportunity to look at it, so. Uh, we have public comment again. I'm gonna read the rules. State your name for the record. Speak only of the chairperson. Stand behind the podium when speaking. Limit comments to three minutes or fewer. Follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking and I will repeat that this is statements. There will be not no questions or answers from the commissioners. So commit uh public comment. Come on up. This is where any this is any subject matter. It does not have to be agenda. Come on up and have a seat, sir. Tell us your name.
Short-term rentals, George Bueller. Bears bear other bear the.
So a couple of things I just wanted to touch on real quickly. A House Bill fifty-four thirty-eight, the sponsors Joey Anderson out of Sagatuck, Michigan. Been on the phone with him for a couple of hours at different intervals. Uh, nothing that he's proposing in that bill will affect county or township rules. As opposed to um bills that were put together before. Um, they were designed to override some of the county rules and some of the township rules. This, they're putting together a bill. That basically is gonna just rake in some money for the state. Um, they're gonna leave all the county rules in place and all the township rules in place. So I have um. Joey's phone number, I can give it to Ryan Veder and you can talk to him directly. Um, I had some concerns about getting down to the HOA and POH levels and we're a summer resort association. So um I'm gonna talk to him for a little about that to make sure that he doesn't, that in the writing of that um. Um, House Bill that they don't override the that level of rules. So number two, um. The the rules on ordinances for short-term rentals, I think Churchill and Mills might be here, the new supervisor maybe, I don't know. But they don't have anything. Uh, Mills Mills doesn't have anything pertaining to short-term rentals and Churchill doesn't have anything. So those are not possibilities um for relief for the residents that have a hotel running rate in Exorto. Um, and so I just wanted to push that back towards the county and say, you know, you guys. Don't have much money by the sound of it.
We don't.
But, you know, commercial zoning and residential, I've been on a planning commission in Brandon Township for twenty-five years. We don't, we never let commercial run in residential. It's just not done. And that's what's going on in your county, all over your county. So I don't know what you can do about it. I just want you to put a. Put it in your heart to realize that. It's it's inappropriate. If I want to open up a pistol ring, a range next to my house, next or at my house. With a residential home next door, are you gonna not enforce commercial rules against me doing that? I mean, there's a lot of things that can fall into a commercial classification that don't belong in residential. And one of them is running a hotel. So I'm off my soapbox again.
Thank you. No, no. Next. Public comment, come on up. Right here. This is the committee.
This is the committee.
Medium seats today, I guess.
Hi, my name is Vicki Barnes. I'm an employee for TMD Correctional Services. We provide the medical services at the jail. Um, as you can see, I also work at the villa because I had had a plan B with not knowing one day to the next what was going on. Um, it's my understanding that you've been working on a contract with Ross Common County for almost a year. I know that you can answer this question, but. I'm assuming that that's exactly accurate because the letter from Jody Valentino stated that. Do for nearly a year, you've been working on this contract. So one of my thought provoking things from this letter is is that one reason why. The three, not one, not two, but three opportunities with other counties to house their inmates was turned down because you had a plan all along to just close the jail. Um, uh, those other counties would have definitely assisted with the budget. You guys are talking seven hundred thousand dollars. If you would have took Calcasca. Which Lieutenant Oger had set up, that would have been a hundred thousand dollars. If you'd have took Gladwin County, that could have been another hundred thousand dollars. Grand Traverse County would have been what? I think at the last meeting that was five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars was quoted. I just feel like there's a lot of money that could have been saved for this county that was completely disregarded and I can't help but look at it. That there was an underlying plan from a year ago. Um, you have lots of great people that work at the jail that have been in limbo for a year. Some have left because they have families to support. Some have been very dedicated and um they could have left, but their commitment to their county, to their community. And to their job, they've stuck it out and stayed around, even with the yo-yo effect of not knowing one day to the next what was going on. The medical department and Oscoda County have been given their thirty day notice, which means that as of September thirtieth. Um, they are done. So September thirtieth at five P M, the medical department will no longer be at Ogumaw County and same with Oscoda. So you're positive that the inmates are gonna be placed somewhere. I'm glad you are so positive because everybody was positive Ross Common County was gonna take them. I strongly encourage the commissioners to get ahold of the people in Ross Common County and find out why that did not happen. Because it just is very alarming to me that at the last minute, after one year of them saying that. They do diligently and professionally and impartiality um provided means for this to happen. And then all of a sudden, it doesn't. It's very concerning concerning to me. So if you decide to close the jail, which you already have, it's more than obvious. Do you realize that leaving one staff on? Puts that employee and whatever inmate they bring in at risk. If you have an employee or if you have an inmate that's on suicide risk, your employee can't even go to the bathroom. Your your three minutes is up. I apologize, but that's the rules.
Lovely.
Next public comment? Any other public comment? Are you coming up, sir? Come on up.
Calendar, I was timing. Sorry. Y U C H.
Right here, sir.
Okay, I prefer to stand. It's.
You can you can stand here.
Steve Eukas, Y U C H A S Z, Indianwood Trail Mills Township. Um, I just wanted to say, I don't know if I commented before, Ryan Veder's been excellent. I know the guy's phone's been blowing up. He's been informative and incredibly patient with all the people that we're calling him. We are lucky to have him here. Um. One of my first question was, now there's an ordinance on the book, something to do with bed and breakfast. And it seems to me we could update that ordinance at a very minimal cost. I know we're in harm's way with regard to the fiscal state of things. But it seems like we could update that particular ordinance to get rid of the uh ambiguity involved. And it wouldn't cost anything and it might address some of these issues, whether or not the state acts, which I don't have a lot of faith in. We had a lot of a significant number of voters participate in our vote last year, the majority supporting addressing the short-term rentals. George and I are already receiving me uh messages. Making light of the county's position with regard to the short-term rentals. It's a little unnerving that they think they can just thumb their nose at the rules and regulations. I find that disheartening. And I think we need to be prepared to be proactive. Well, obviously, we're trying to do it from a resort association standpoint. But there is some politics involved there as well who we're wrestling with. We're trying to work through that. I do intend to talk to the new supervisor of Mills Township. I regularly attend their meetings. With regard to the short-term rentals to see what they can do from their standpoint as well, even if it is a financial regulatory responsibility. I think that might be one tool we could use in our toolbox. Um, on another note, I also have a place downstate that I'm going to sell, but I haven't yet. But I go to their meetings as well. I know this may stun you, but. Couple of years ago, they had a program with the power company addressing the municipal lighting. And they went to LED lighting in their street lights and in the buildings and there was a program where the. Power company reimbursed them to some point. Anyway, it was kind of a hand in hand type deal. Uh, they 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 had to put some money out in the short term, but they were able to garner that back in savings and some sort of a rebate perhaps from the power company. So it may be worth investigating. And that was the Village of Goodrich in Alice Township. Uh, that was all I have. Thank you again. And once again, kudos to Ryan Veder for his patience.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Come on up.
My name is Laurie Phinney, L A U R I E P H I N N E Y. Um, I'm a retired nurse from the jail. Um, I share Victor's concerns um and I would like to point out that if the jail is closed. And leaving only one staff member on at night, under the circumstances of somebody being an inmate, being on suicide watch. That that officer is not able to even go to the bathroom to relieve himself, putting himself at risk as well as the inmate. Um, if the officer himself had a medical emergency. Who's gonna call nine one one for him? The inmate that's in his cell? Um. Let's see, where am I at? No, sorry. And um. If there were the potential for a lawsuit, if you have no medical, you have no other services provided, you have somebody come in. Diabetic, you have no services provided for food. You have nobody to offer him insulin or anything. The. Police officers are able to do that, but if they make a mistake, there is a huge potential for a lawsuit from that. Um, transporting. A lot of um overtime is utilized for from the budget for the overtime to transport. The Ross Common um contract supposedly, they didn't even want the inmates released in Ross Common. So an officer would have to have gone over, picked up inmates. They don't do it in lumps. They do it one at a time. Pick them up, transport them back to release them here. That's that's cost, that's not cost effective at all. I'm sure there's other ob- um, ob- obvious um things within that contract. That made no sense. Um, getting rid of the jail. Putting the inmates somewhere else does not make that problem go away. It's just footing that bill somewhere else. And then if that other jail decides to raise their rates. You're stuck. So I don't see that it makes any sense for a budget to ship it out somewhere else. It makes no sense.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up, ma'am.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Pat. Last name is Beasley hyphen Grow. Do you want me to spell it? My concern is, when I look back when we were doing this jail, how much community input went on with all that? The hours that everybody worked. Uh, it was, you know, voting on the the stuff to get the jail. And I feel like this has been done by just this few people with very little community input. And I don't think that is right. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment? In the room? Any public comment on the phone? Public comment on the phone? Close session to discuss. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I'll make the motion.
I was, that's what I was gonna let everybody know and then there'll be a motion. There will not be any any business afterwards, correct? So item eight is close session to discuss collective bargaining bargaining under MCL one five dot two six eight. Commissioner Scott?
I'll make the motion that we go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining to far under MCL fifteen point two six A one C. Thanks, George. Appreciate it.
I guess I was gonna have you. Feel like there was really a reason for you to.
Yeah. Give me a couple of things here. I'll make sure that the report gets edited to talk about.
As you're recording, as you're recording.
Sorry, I shouldn't. I wish, next time speak up, because I had intentions of it, because I seen you taking notes too.
Um. Until he said recording and stopped, it's still going.
I don't.
All right. So let you know.
I had made an error. I had asked him to speak afterwards to kind of.
You stay in.
With some points.
You can.
Can, but it's all finance. Up to you.
Uh-huh. Motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to come back into open session. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Jenny Davis, Frank Scott.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Adjourned at seven sixteen.
Everybody have a good night.
I would like to work with you.
I will not be here next Thursday, you guys.